Yeah.
So we're gonna add that to the agenda. Do I need a mo-- I don't need a motion on it, do I? As long as we talk about it?
Well, we can put it, oh, we're gonna put it on the next agenda, but either way. It's pretty simple, I guess.
You have to vote.
Do it?
I make a motion, we add the Wind Hall signage at the Mountain School of Wind Hall discussion to the agenda.
Okay, motion made.
Yep, and we've got--
Seconded, yeah.
Yep, and we've got--
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we can talk about it.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to change the, it says employee evaluations, but that's not what that is. I was confused the heck out of me.
What is it?
Talked to two different people to find out. It, this is the--
Employee discussions.
Yeah, this is just, this is like more like employee satisfaction.
Correct, well, one of them's here already.
Oh, I wonder what it might--
But we gotta, we gotta wait a few minutes and then--
Oh, that's a good reason why Stacy isn't here yet, is that why?
Well, no.
Oh.
I will--
But you're sitting out this.
The first two are PD.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll go through what we can--
Don't you understand that it's not--
Yes, I do understand.
Is that through me? I'm like, wait a minute.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're through.
I'm sorry about that.
We didn't really get started, Stacy just added a couple things, but welcome.
Oh, okay.
How's the fair coming, Stacy? I don't know, I haven't been there at all.
Okay, so, um, has everyone read the minutes of last meeting?
Yes.
Are there any additions or corrections?
No. No, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes for Wednesday, August 6th.
Motion was made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. It's a moving target.
There you are. Fake.
These words? Did you put that in?
That comes out.
Okay, we have a small folder of bills.
Oh, okay.
I'm not gonna split them up.
Yeah, I'm not gonna track them around.
Yep. So it should be two minutes to do it. So, our next item, I'm gonna be passing the bills around here. We have about ten, so. Hey, Wendy, Stacy.
Good, you?
Good.
Are you all right at the firehouse, or what's that?
Um, I'd like you to do right behind your firehouse, up, up against the building.
Against the building?
Yes, where all that--
Well, I'm sure about that, so I didn't--
Yeah, please, Wendy, go by next time.
Okay.
Pete was going by with the mowing machine, and I had to mow some of the stuff around so we can see better when we go there.
Out the driveway?
In behind the building, so like where the bank and stuff, so that when we get to start talking about that stuff.
Right now.
Okay, um--
My computer is not working.
It isn't?
My mouse--
You probably got a dead mouse.
Well, my mouse is dead, but so is this.
You haven't been treating your computer very well, then.
Oh, I have, but I--
Do what I always do, restart it.
I did. I set it off, restarted it, and I still had that--
So is that thing in there?
While we're--
No, it's not it.
What is that?
Put the mouse-- From the mess.
While we're waiting for everyone to review the bills.
Use a Mac.
Are there any public comments about anything that is not on the agenda? No, okay. So in a few minutes, we get these bills done, and then we will go into executive session. Who else is coming for the--
They said it was just one, it's small bills, is that why there's only one--
DJ?
DJ, so we'll, we'll probably get started on that, 'cause we've got one of you guys here, and we'll probably start on that in just a few minutes after we get these bills signed, which shouldn't take very long. Yeah. Can we talk about this again?
What, what?
Sure.
This is for the Town of Wind Hall political campaigning, a campaign sign policy at the Mountain School of Wind Hall. And you, you, Alex, you passed this in, you got this to us from the school.
Yep.
So that we can approve it. You, you've approved it as far as the regulations go.
Yeah, yeah, so all, all it's saying is that, 'cause I talked with Margaret, because that is private property up there.
Correct.
Um, she doesn't want any signs in the ground at all. So there will be no signs in the ground, um, but we agreed that during Election Day or on Election Day, people are allowed to stand in that middle island area in the parking lot, which is circled red on the map. It's a good place for them, visible to everybody, but not in the way of traffic.
And it's, it's whatever, the 500 feet that needs to be from polling, or is there a number? I think there's a number.
It's up to the election officer.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, so there'll be no political signs at all, but people can stand there.
You can, they could pull the sign, they can't place any in the ground.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't really ever have any.
Well, no, no, not really, but anyways, so this was-- This, this says the policy applies to Mountain School at Wind Hall, including their property alongside routes, alongside school road down to Route 30. There'll be no political or campaign signs allowed to be placed in the ground at any time. Campaigning will be allowed only on Election Day and only on the grass concrete island-- where the flagpole is in the middle of the parking lot. See the area circled in red on the map below? And it's just the, the island.
'Cause it's kind of technical, because that's gonna pass.
Okay. So, and this is submitted by Margaret--
Slatter.
Slatter.
Yep.
Does, could I get a motion on this?
I make a motion to approve the Mountain School at Wind Hall political sign policy.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have something on the bills, I just don't know, who, who do you think wrote change name? 'Cause has Nicole Durney--
That's me.
Oh, you wrote change name?
I just wrote that, yep.
Oh, you wrote it?
We updated that, yep, I just wrote that.
Who are you writing it to?
Debbie will see it, and then she'll need Ashley to take care of it.
That's what I'm saying, who, who would change the name?
Okay.
I just thought we should correct it.
Yeah, it should be going actually.
We should start.
I just didn't know.
Yeah, all right, yeah, well, there's a few others that are, well, there's one of them, what was the one we kept running for years? Was it Comcast or somebody?
It was to Wind Hall.
Wind Hall.
Wind Hall.
That's--
And we could never get that one.
Yeah.
Yeah. It has--
Okay, but anyway, so, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll go through those.
Scott, have it, what is it? Trevor!
All right. I didn't scribble like dating there. I figured, I figured somebody should do it that could write well.
Yeah, I've got--
Oh, that's it, this is it.
Oh, but I figured I'd let somebody write that they could read their writing, because--
It's gonna have to go, well, it's gonna have to go around, because we didn't sign, 'cause it's not--
I know, but we, the letter, but look at it first before they vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay, we're almost done with that.
Oh, that's--
So, do you have some, are those curb cuts permits?
Yes, they are.
Why don't we do those while we're waiting? I, I think that we have enough--
Let's do that.
Small enough bills we can--
You got a bunch of them.
Yes, I do, so the first one is--
Wait, wait, uh, usually writes that down.
Well, we can just pass these to her when she's done, so it's just so she gets all the information.
Well, we can pick up the minutes off of Gnat, I guess.
Gnat.
Gnat.
Well, she just--
Is it a Gnat?
She's just going in the office.
It's not Gnat.
Gnat. They're gnats. They're gnats, the G is silent, gnat. You know, gnats are little things that fly around in your face.
Let's not even go there.
What?
Nothing, so what have, what have you got for, for cuts?
Okay, James Watson, at 28 Burnt Hill, they're repairing a culvert.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is Jason and Iona Seamer, 69 Sugar Bush Road, construct a new access.
So have these been signed by Trevor?
Well, this one is signed by Trevor.
Yes, this one is a brand new one, this needs to get approval to move forward.
Should we do them one at a time?
That's what I'm thinking, there's no way to do it the other way.
So, James Watson.
Yeah.
This is, this is at 28 Burnt Hill Road, Stacy, they're, they used an old form, so you and I will just have to sign below. Okay.
So, can I have a motion on that?
Yeah, motion to approve James Watson's, uh, culvert replacement.
Uh huh, motion seconded.
I second.
Seconded, and all in favor say aye.
Sorry, miss, I, um, got my computer.
Julie's taking notes.
Okay, sorry about that.
I mean, Melissa's taking notes.
No, I, um, yeah.
Okay. We'll hand these to you when we're done, so you have--
These are curb cuts, we'll give them all to you so that you can see them.
Oh.
Okay?
Access permit?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
So the next one is Jason and Iona Seamer, 69 Sugar Bush, this is construct a new access. We're signing in the wrong spot, we're supposed to sign up here.
Oh, yes, this is not the final approval, right, so I missed that.
I was playing the battery.
All right, you get a good cut.
Okay.
I'm gonna cross that out.
Okay.
I'll just white it out before I record it. This is no culvert needed at 69 Sugar Bush, this is just a final sign off.
Oh, this does have five, by the way.
Oh, oh, so--
It doesn't have--
Down there, okay, it got cut off, I think. What's the name on it? Seamer, S.I.E.M.E.R. Make a motion, we sign off on the final approval for the Seamers on Sugar Bush.
I am confused, because Trevor signed in the final approval.
Yeah, 'cause I, I think it's actually done, but without--
Is it in the ground?
Without him here, he's, it's in, so we can--
They're writing about the curb cut put in.
So we get final sign.
My impression is that he has inspected it and approved it under the final signing, so then we have to do a final signing on it too.
Right, but we never approved the proceeding, so it's okay, we're all good, you have two places to sign.
Okay.
Okay, so we have--
Motion was made and seconded to do the final approval on--
Right, it's the, it's the initial approval and final approval.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And is this the same answer?
This one's a final approval, we already signed off.
Oh, this one is the final approval, did we, did, I'm sorry, was this motion, did we do this?
Jason and Iona Seamer, uh, for construct a new access. We need a motion and an approval.
Was there a motion to?
Julie made the motion, I'll second it.
Approve the final.
Yep. Okay, is motion made and seconded to approve the final on Seamer?
Yep.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That one's all done in both places.
Okay.
So two on this one as well?
I just wanted to see it.
The next one is Pluto LLC, which is Paul Paraccio, where it says Sly Street, uh, just above the post office. This is a final approval.
Okay, so motion for Sly Street for Pluto Company?
This is the one.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
The next one is Daniel Peak, 73 Ravenwood. This one is a final sign off, no culvert needed.
Okay, have we got a motion on that? No culvert needed.
I make a motion to approve Daniel Peak, final sign off.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You're passing them down too.
What's this one?
If that one's done, that one's all done, I'm just trying to get them to you to--
This is, the next one is David Powers, 15 nearing LLC. This is a new culvert, and this is a final sign off. I make a motion to--
What's the, what's the name?
David Powers, 15 nearing LLC.
Yeah, my watch says Road.
No, it doesn't say Road, it's, it's just 15 nearing LLC.
That's his business, is that where it is?
Yes, it's 15 nearing Road.
Oh.
Yep.
And this is for the culvert?
This is for the new culvert, 18 inch.
Wait, so this is, it's in?
And it's in, this is final approval. I make a motion to final approve David Powers.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is it? Jeez, look at all the curb cuts.
I think seven of them.
All right, so get them out.
All right, the next one is Eric and Tina Johnson, 38 Beaver Street, this is a new culvert. 18 inch culvert, this is, this is the first approval of this.
Has Trevor looked at it to see that that is--
Trevor signed off on it.
Okay, so we have a motion for--
I make a motion to approve Eric and Tina Johnson at 38 Beaver Street for a new 18 inch culvert.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is, okay, this is a replacement.
Jeez.
Okay, that's all the curb cuts.
And some, yeah. Approved on, yeah, sure.
That's get an hour pan, you know.
And I am the last one to look at these, so--
What's the two weeks, what's two weeks for the--
I would make a motion that we approve as presented, but we haven't signed yet. I second.
Motion was made and seconded to approve the pay warrants, um, is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll pass this around for final signing.
There's one more.
I'm next door.
There's one more cut.
This is first approval. That's first approval on that one. Okay, so, um, this is, I guess we have to go into executive session to do this employee conference.
Yes, yeah, we should do that, yeah.
I guess, um, we hit done as much as we can and to take up the time we've used so far.
Maybe the other employees are downstairs.
We'll, we'll do the ones that are here, and then we'll move on from there.
Well, yeah, better time one at a time.
Yeah, we gotta do one at a time, see, can I get a motion to go into executive session at 5:48?
I make a motion to go into executive session to talk to employees.
Then we'll have you stay first, and then we will move on from there. This shouldn't take--
We're back from executive session at 6:33.
No decisions.
No decisions, just talking with two police officers and two highway department members. I assume Scott's not going to be here tonight?
I'm sorry.
I assume Scott's not going to be here tonight.
No, he's at the fairgrounds managing the carnival people.
Okay, and then I'm assuming highway department's not going to be here tonight.
He was supposed to be, but...
I think he's coming.
Okay, we can get back to it.
Well, they say 6:45 for him, so...
Yeah, all right, we'll just... So, old business, when all planning...
Did you make any decisions?
We did not make any decisions, we just talked. We just had conversations with...
Not transfer, no. Highway, no.
Really, that employee evaluations is really employee feedback is what it is.
I have interviews.
It's not.
Well, now I know for next time, I will change it.
Yeah, see, feedback.
It was just ask him if...
That's what it was, really.
Just...
Employee feedback, okay.
All right, so, we have, when all planning commission, do we have any old business there?
Well, no, Cameron, you have it down for...
Okay, well, we can come back to it, we'll move on.
You have her down for seven.
Okay.
I think Trevor is on his way, he just asked if you were still an executive.
I'm sorry, what, seven is what we're... Oh, you're saying it's not seven now? Is somebody coming? Is she coming for some reason?
Yes, she is.
Oh.
Okay, so let's, we're just keep going down the thing. We have, we have, let's go right down, short-term rentals. Step right up there.
I don't know if we have enough time for that.
No, you don't.
Hi.
Hello, Christine.
How are you guys? Great. Okay, let's see. Few things that's busy, things are busy, things are busy with lots of emails, lots of questions, lots of back and forth, lots of clarification, and I do think that we need to consider making a real amendment to the ordinance. One of the, you know, primary things has to do with the fire inspection, which you guys were all forwarded those emails, and basically the state mandates that, or the state law says if there's less than eight, you can self-certify. I spoke with Patrick Banks who's in charge of all of this, I asked him if we could conceivably, you know, what are the options, could we appoint our own inspector from the fire department to something like that? He said no, he said others have tried that, it's not likely that would get approved. He said it's really just less than eight, they self-certify, however, if there's a 911 type call or a complaint from a past tenant, then a fire inspection can be requested based on either a fire call or a past tenant who complained about, you know, that the smoke alarms didn't work or something.
No, about conditions.
About conditions, exactly. He said he would not, and I said, well, what if I were going through and, you know, counting beds and this stuff, and the other thing, he said, I wouldn't, you're not a fire inspector, you know, it could make you liable, which I tend to agree.
Well, we're not writing a fire report, but we're counting beds for the purpose of conforming with the, with the short-term rental ordinance, so, I mean, if they're saying that they only have, you know, whatever, they're saying we have six occupants, they have eight, so a five-bedroom house is eight people occupants.
Right.
So that counts, or it's eight bedrooms?
I thought, I thought it was normally two per...
It's two per with one and one after, after three bedrooms.
So I have a couple of things along that line, one...
I just want to clarify because I did not say, and I should because we had this conversation a lot, but she's saying eight bedrooms or eight people occupying?
So on the, you, you apply for a number of bedrooms and max occupancy of people.
No, not us, I'm saying is Patrick Banks, fire inspector saying, we will not come unless there's eight bedrooms or eight occupants.
Eight occupants.
Eight occupants.
Yeah.
So eighty-five bedroom, which is from the phone calls I've been getting.
He says eight or less, they don't come, you self-certify.
Not bedrooms, though, occupants.
Right.
Okay, so, under our rule, under our short-term rentals...
That would just...
Most people that I've been getting these phone calls from are trying to figure out how come they have five bedrooms, and I tell them it's because your builder back in the eighties built a three-bedroom house with a den and an office, and then you were sold a five-bedroom house, that happens all over the place. So, assuming that they get that, you know, qualified, that so that a five-bedroom house, which is eight people occupancy, he will inspect?
He will not. It's eight people, eight-person occupancy or less, so eight people, he will not inspect.
Oh, eight is the, is the cut, so it has to be more than eight.
It has to be nine plus.
Nine, okay, so it would be a six-bedroom house.
Right, yeah.
Six-bedroom would be...
How does a six, how does six-bedroom figure out to be nine people?
Because it's two for each bedroom, for the, our ordinance says you're allowed two for each bedroom for the first three bedrooms and one for every bedroom after that, so six and three is nine.
So, I have a question.
I just assumed every bedroom was two.
No, that's not true. Because the state, and the reason Marcel wrote it that way is because the new state permits come in, and that's what they say.
Do you think, do you foresee anything else we're going to have to amend, other than this?
Yes.
Oh yeah, there's a list.
So, like, we're going to need to do, like, a group of amendments?
Yeah, if you would like, what I'd like to do is just make an amendment suggestion for the next meeting, and I can give it to Alyssa who can blast it out to you beforehand so you can see it, or whatever you would like to do, you know, based on what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing, and thoughts, I guess.
So, one thing is not necessarily an amendment, but it, we're going to have to address it. So amendments probably have to go through the formal process of the ordinance.
Yeah.
So that's a bit of a pain and takes over sixty days.
Well, that's why I want to make sure we do it all at once.
Sure, and there's a lot, and there are a number of things that have come up, but particularly... Sure, and there's a lot, and there are a number of things that have come up, particularly by amendment or otherwise, or just by select board fiat, and just because it's impossible to comply with, we will not have all the licenses in by August 31st, it will not happen, I mean, it's just impossible. And the deadline was August 31st, or we're going to start coming after, we have to be very, we have to clarify that.
We're human.
But the next, well, GOVOS took much longer than we thought, and so our process didn't start in time.
Right.
And then, so there's no way for people, I mean, there are people, and I told somebody today, I said, you know, that will be addressed, he was freaking out, like, I only have a week, huh? I'm like, don't worry about it.
I have to address that also with new.
Have you been telling people that, just get your stuff in?
Very, where get your stuff in as quickly as you can.
Right, it's a new process.
It's a, and it's a new process, you'll be basically be dated as of August 31st, but you're not going to be penalized, you know, September 15th, it's going to get a little bit.
Was it dated, I thought the date was, I thought the dates were going to be when each license was granted, is its date.
It is, but what I'm trying to do is make sure that people don't say, oh, well, if I don't get it in until November 15th, and I've got a year from November 15th, I'm trying to keep them, you know, tied to the August 31st, so they're not just, you know, I've got as much time in the world as I want. And I don't know, going back to what you're saying, Julie, is in terms of amendments, maybe there's a, because it would be really helpful if the select board could basically vote to adopt the state law that eight or less can self-certify so that I can put through some licenses that I cannot otherwise put through, even though the fee has been paid and they are, you know.
So you have all.
So we have, the issue is that the ordinance now says you have to self-certify, and you have to have the fire and safety come in, fire and safety has refused to come in if it's eight or less.
Which, which I questioned in the beginning, because I said, you sure they're going to come in and do it, I said, they are not on board for this, they said they were.
No, they said they were to me specifically at the Vermont State Fair last year.
I know, I know, but I talked to one of these inspectors at.
Yeah, no, that's what they're saying now.
At Rosenville Market Place, I don't think, we don't have time for all that.
Yeah, it's, so, it took somebody dies in an apartment, right?
Yeah, so, can, can we do that legally, can we go ahead and make that change so that she can issue something?
Can we make a motion to just make that change right now for, and then with the caveat that at the next meeting, we're going to formally amend?
It's sixty days, so the ordinance has to go back, and there's many more changes than that that have come up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think, you know, we can administratively authorize our short-term rental administrator to.
That was.
To address that, to address it in her discretion or under the, address it the way that we need it addressed, because it's the only way it's going to work, and then, and then, you know, so you won't enforce, you know, to say, we can, we can, I think, we can make a motion even now, well, yeah, even now, and I don't know if you have your whole list with you, but we can address this, I think, by saying, you know, we're directing, you know, the ordinance will get amended to reflect this, but that's along across 60 days, I mean, we can't wait that long, you know, but we can authorize our short-term rental administrator that in the interim period that, you know, these would not be violations and not need enforcement of these.
I think we should, we should give her a vote of confidence.
Yeah.
From the board, that is, that is not totally official yet, but we are going to redo it so that you can get the ones that have all of their stuff together, that fit the criteria that you have now so that you can get some going through.
Right, what I've been doing is that I've been saying to them that the, it's the rental safety, health, and financial obligation form, which basically has division of fire, safety, general checklist.
Yeah.
As long as their check marks are on there, I've been having them upload that as their fire, safety report.
Right, that is, right.
If it's eight people or less.
Right, which is what's required.
I'll be right back, just a second, Teresa.
Yeah, so, which is what, you know, which I think, I think that fills that.
Okay.
Right, so you're doing that, I was just saying that we could officially say.
Yeah, so, so that I can comfortably hit final approval if they have that in.
Yes.
The only thing is going back.
Sure.
This is just a thought, but just, like, could you possibly just, as a board, authorize her to utilize some sort of a waiver process on, you know, an individual basis with such as this one instance, so it isn't, I mean, it's.
That's what I just said.
I mean, but I mean to a wavering.
It's not even a waiver, though?
It doesn't have to.
No, it's just usually.
Well, I just, Alyssa was very adamant that we, it wouldn't be, you know, you'd have to do the whole process, the 60-day process, and.
No, it is a 60-day process to amend the ordinance, but what I was suggesting is what you just said, same thing.
But what I was saying was, if you did it as a waiver, it gave her the latitude to make the judgment on each individual case, by case basis, not just because if it's some of the criteria, or she could.
I guess I have to see the tape, but I think that's what I just.
I, I think, I think we got to give her a vote of confidence.
Same thing.
That, that you deal with these items that you can, that are, that we're going to have to change, and that we will stand behind, is, is, is that the right way to say it?
Yes, that's what I was saying, so then, yes, that there are certain things in the ordinance that.
So, we can't, we can't make all the changes.
Well, we can make them, but we can't, but they won't be effective, they won't be actually effective in the ordinance until it goes through the 60-day process, which is, you know, three readings by us, and then sitting for 60 days, and we adopt, we have to re-adopt, it has to get rewritten, taking out those sections that need to come out, and then we have to adopt the new ordinance, I think it's three, three meetings to adopt it, and 60 days from the first reading?
Not necessarily three readings, but definitely has to come up at least two or three times, and that has to be posted in the newspaper and.
Right, and it's 60 days, so, so I, I think we should, there are, and it's more than just the fire marshal, there were a few other things that have come up as well. The only thing that, I wasn't sure what you were saying exactly, licenses are supposed to, because, because some people are going to buy a place in October and start their term.
Right, that's when they become active, when they start applying for their license, so they would, as soon as they become active and they fill out the paperwork, that's when their license would take effect. Right now, there are a lot of people who are active who haven't even started the process.
Right, right, but I mean, when you get, you said something about August 31st being, you want to make them all August 31st?
I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know, Bill, that it's going to actually, you know, print that way, but when I talk to people, I want them to be working on it, not sitting there posting, so, if they think that they're sort of a.
If they think they can wait till November 15th to get approved.
So another issue came up yesterday, the day before, so one guy called me, and we went through what's going on, and he has, theoretically has a five-bedroom house, but he, in the past, it slept like ten, and so, he reached out to.
That's how I would have counted bedrooms, two per, two would have been ten.
No, it was more than, it was more than an accident, it was a bigger, I have some notes, but, but he went out, he, he reached out to an engineer to change his septic system, he wants an increase, going to put a pretreatment on it, he's going to make it so that he can rent it to make the kind of money that he planned on making when he bought the house that he thought he bought.
Right.
Because nobody told him that it really wasn't.
Yeah, so there's another one of those that falls into the, you know, Stratton-Windall, the, on the sewer line, where if you have four bedrooms, okay, in your bill, it's 70 gallons per person per bedroom.
Right.
Right, so then in theory, if you're on that sewer line, you should be able to sleep eight people, four bedrooms, two, 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 and two, you know what I mean, that's how it should work. Now, our ordinance says that it's the two, two, two plus one.
And one.
But our ordinance also has, if the gallonage supports the 70 gallons per person, that then you're actually okay.
But somebody wrote to me and said the fire district won't, won't tell what the gallonage is, even though I know what it is.
No, they will, they will, I mean, Rosa, I've got, you know, I have some that have said, here's our gallonage, you know, and I have one gentleman who wants to be the five-bedroom, so he had to go back to Rosa, change to a five-bedroom, pay the back money, so.
Right, seven years, he goes back seven years.
Whatever, whatever, he wants the five-bedroom, and he can have the five-bedroom, what I'm trying to get to is, you know, in, in the ordinance, where there is, and it C specifically says, if the gallonage is 70 per person, then, you know, who trumps, what trumps, like, does, because if it's on the sewer line, and they're saying you're five bedrooms, and each bedroom supports two people, then are you, can you have occupancy of eight in your four-bedroom versus seven, because the ordinance says, and, that kind of takes me to, why is it that once you get over three bedrooms in the fourth bedroom, why can't it be two people versus one person? I mean, I, I, most bedrooms in my experience are designed for two people, so I guess that would be another thing that I would love to know more, or like us to think about.
Right, the reason was, what I said previously, is that the new state permits come out, if you get a four-bedroom house from the state, it says specifically sleeps seven.
Okay.
You know, sleep, that's how they do it, for whatever reason.
But do, are we bound?
You're bound by a state, anyone that has.
Are we obligated by the state?
Anybody that has a state permit, you're definitely bound by your state permit and your septic capacity.
But is that, that's new going forward?
But there's only people that are after 2007, people that either built or did some amendment to their, I mean, like this guy, he, he wants a different permit, so he's hiring an engineer to put on some kind of pretreatment system.
Right.
And to get the occupancy that he wants, he'll pay a lot more in, you know, in licensing fees, but he's going to pay 35 grand, give or take, in, in, you know, having the engineer design it, apply for it, get him the permit, and then getting it contracted to put it in.
So.
So that might, actually, just, so that might change, like, you're going to have some people, like, say, this guy may go forward with his, currently I have X number of bedrooms, but then when he re-applies, when he, so his license, he don't, his, when he redoes his system, say next, in the spring, because he's not going to make it, it's not, it's not going to happen before his, you know, winter rentals.
Right.
So when he re-applies in the spring, it'll be a different bedroom count, right, because he'll have to amend, you know, whatever he submitted, he'll have to amend it and talk to you and figure it out.
Okay, so what are we going to do?
If you survive that.
Can you just be clear what you need from us tonight?
There you go.
I would like to be able to sign off on the eight or less you can self-certify for fire, I would like to have that liberty, something else just to be aware of, and most of these, I can actually look at their listings online, and if something looks scary to me, you know, then I would be inclined, I don't know, if that, I, if something looks scary, I would say I'm okay with going and taking a look, I'm trying to avoid doing too much taking a look from the standpoint of, I don't feel like it's, you know, I want, or that the town wants liability. For me, the taking a look has a lot more to do than if somebody, because sometimes they slip and they say, okay, you know, I have four bedrooms, but I am applying for 12 people, right? And so if I see something like that, and I'm looking at the listing, and I'm like, this just looks like a rat's den, then I would be inclined to go take a look.
Okay.
If I look at something, and it's, you know, it's actually, they've got four bedrooms, one's this beautiful big bunk room with four beds in it, and, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't, then I just go back and I say, well, with four beds, you can apply for seven people, you know, you've got to go change, and I give them a new application so that I'm not the one changing their number of occupancy, they are changing their occupancy.
But it's based on their setting, so you're saying these are people, say, on Wind Hall Stratton Fire District, or?
And there, it doesn't, you know what I mean, like, I'm getting all over, so.
Right, but if there's somebody that's having, I mean, that's part of the purpose of the ordinance, is that if somebody is on a three-bedroom septic system that was put in in the 80s, and they're saying now that we're renting to 12 people because we put bunk beds in each room.
But they, but if they have three bedrooms, they can't say they're renting, can I can check their, their listing, and GOVOS checks their listing, and, you know, they have to be advertising for six people.
Right, but you just said.
It doesn't, yeah, I know, I, what I said is if they're saying that they're four bedrooms, but they have 12-plus beds, and it looks like a rat, you know, like, it's like, you know, like it's a fire hazard, even though I'm not the fire inspector, but it looks like this is.
Right, we're not looking for, so, that's, and I think that's where the difference is coming in, you're not a fire inspector, we're not, and we are not trying to make you a fire inspector at all.
No, I understand, I don't want to be a fire.
No, because that's what Banks was talking about.
No, what I'm trying, I guess.
Being a problem for towns, but.
I don't really want to be an inspector, is what I guess I'm trying to say.
I think so, I think it's like, it's like the health officer, it's a similar position, as far as, I, I, I mean, unless there's some other way to confirm the occupancy, our fees are based on occupancy, so.
Yeah, but, so, Bill, I have a five-bedroom house, and I could easily sleep 14 people in those five bedrooms.
Right.
Right, so, but, so if, so if I were sent to count my beds and my, you know, how I would do things, you'd be saying, ah, you got beds for 14, but you only have a five-bedroom house, you can only have eight in here, there's a point at which you, you can't, like, it doesn't, I'm not going to go take my beds out of my house, you know, it's my house, if I were to have.
Well, if you're not in the short-term, if you're not in the short-term rental program, you don't have to, you can take your risk that you're going to destroy your septic system.
Right, but some people do both, do you know what I mean, like, some people really do both, I mean, I told you, no, I actually tried to go through the process a little bit so I would know what it'd be like, you know, and it's, quite frankly, there's parts of it that are a pain in the ass.
Right.
It's like, but, it, which is, which is fine, because now it also makes more sense as I've gone through it with the eight or less, I mean, to me, that actually makes sense, I don't, I, I think that that's not a bad thing, so.
So we're going to approve for you to be able to do that.
We're making, make them.
I would make a motion that we allow our short-term rental administrator to approve the eight-or-less self-certifying short-term rental applications until.
Without, without a full fire inspection.
Shouldn't. Until we can get the official change in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Second.
So, we have a motion made and seconded, I'm not going to repeat it.
There are a lot of other things too, but let's just do this one.
But that will at least give you some momentum to get started.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion on just that article?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I have, just FYI, so, I've had several people complain that the town clerk's office is not willing to let them in to do their own research in the vault, because we talked about it, and what a disaster it would be for our records, and that I'm not willing to do it myself. One gentleman asked if he could send you Uncle Bob's certification that everything was clean for four bedrooms, or something like that, does that work?
So you're talking about a clean slate affidavit?
No, it's not, he's saying Uncle Bob is a septic occupant, like lawyer septic.
When he bought it.
And he's just saying that they.
She didn't make that up, she's using, at first I thought it was like Jim Bob, Billy Bob.
No, they're saying that the septic wasn't inspected before I bought the house, and it's functioning fine, but doesn't mean that it has the capacity for.
Right, and I.
Four, five, six, 10, 12 people.
I explained to him the board did not want me to do it because that would be extremely time-consuming for my office, and we're not equipped to do that, and that I could not have people randomly who don't know what they're doing rummaging through our records. Basically, I would have to stand there and hold their hand.
Right.
And oversee the two, three-hour process.
Christie has a list, a list of people that she sends, here's a list.
But the guy was very excited today, and I calmed him down, and I said that he could reach out to Christie, that she was ready.
Who represented him when he bought.
I didn't get into that because you told me not to get into that.
No, that's what I get into, when somebody calls me, I ask, the first thing I ask them is, before I offer any.
The lawyer has nothing, he said that, my lawyer has nothing, I have Uncle Bob's certification.
Or the lawyer can go back and do the job he should have done.
Well, I'm just bringing it to the table.
Right.
Saying that I don't want, I don't want to get in trouble with the state by people saying I'm not providing public records that I actually have in my possession, and they are not anywhere else.
Right, so what I've been doing is that I have been saying, look, you can, if it's not your closing documents, if you can track down, you know, your, your lawyer, that you did the closing, reach out to them, if that, you can't do that, here are three other lawyers, and I ran, other than, yeah, I put, like, Matt Samuelson, because I know he's up here a lot, Brian T. Sen, and I put Bill, because he's here a lot, take your pick, put them in alphabetical order that you can reach out to.
I can give you a bigger list.
And, and go back to the ordinance, I sent them the link directly to the ordinance, I mean, the default seems to be you have three bedrooms, pretty much anybody can have three bedrooms, six people, because if you can't come up with anything, that's like D, that's kind of a default, even if the house wasn't built prior to 1970.
Seventy-one.
You know, that's, I'm mentally using that default.
You've at least got a baseline.
I've got a baseline, and if you have the clean slate affidavit that says, okay, you know, if somebody used the house prior to 2007 for five bedrooms, then you're good for five, and you need the clean slate affidavit, that's how I've been, you know, handling, because it's not always easy to find.
We, we knew that there was going to be some things that were not going to be gotten, because for many years, there weren't, there wasn't a septic system permit.
Right.
Or if it was, it was handwritten by Charlie Simonetti.
Well, they were, they were in any order, and we didn't have an Excel file of them, which we have. which we have, but the only problem with that file sometimes is that if, if Stacy was the builder, it's under her name.
It could be under Stacy and not the owner.
Well, yeah, it's not under the owner.
Start firm is not undermining.
Right.
You know what I mean, like, it's the same.
Right, but the Excel database that Beth's talking about lets you search by map, block, block, it lets you search by property address, which may or may not be the same anymore, since nine-one-one came in, and it lets you, uh, search by the owner or, or the builder, if you know who it is. And usually between the septic end or the zoning permit, because I mean, I've been doing it for forty years, you can find, you can find it.
But it's time-consuming, I mean, I'll spend three hours the other day and found nothing.
I just, I feel like the default is the three, is D, and the clean slate affidavit can add to three.
Yep.
If, in, in lieu of the other.
So people won't have a clean slate affidavit, because what the, most people won't have those, probably the same reason you didn't, is because what happened, and I spoke to some realtors about it, I'm like, do you guys still hold the permits on this? No, they don't, what they look at is the Lister card.
Right.
And the Lister card will say how many bedrooms it has.
Because I've been asked, can I use a Lister card, you know, and that's another one.
I mean, that's actually.
Not always accurate, right?
Well.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I mean, it.
I mean.
The problem with the Lister card is that some people take, I, I've seen this with Doug, I've asked him, like, hasn't this changed? So the guy called me up and told me. So he just, yeah, he just, it just changed, the septic didn't change.
Because they, they closed the garage in, or.
Yeah, they added an apartment above the garage, the septic didn't change, the, the property still, you know, is only permitted.
Will, will you come up with a list of the changes that you think that we have to make?
Yes.
So that we can do it officially to get started on the timeframe.
Right.
And this will at least give you a little bit of leeway to work.
Between here.
On some of them.
Yep, um, I would like to know what your thoughts are on the gallonage on this, with the sewer, because it's, you know, if people have a hundred and forty gallons, you know, per bedroom, then.
Seventy gallons, per person.
Seven for persons.
Per person.
So two people per bedroom might give up, you know, up there if you're on the sewer line, I mean, it's a little, it's, I guess.
I think if you have, if Rosa, I, I had understood from someone that Rosa was not willing to, that not Rosa, the, the Prudential Committee, was not willing to, somebody wrote that they won't give me this information.
So, so basically, what, because my conversation was, you know, the each room is, you know, a hundred and forty gallons, so if you have four units or four bedrooms, you have, each have.
My, the way I had understood it would work is that if you, if they get something from Rosa, whether she gets it from the Prudential Committee or not, and it says, this property sleeps twelve, I don't care what the number is, whatever Rosa thinks it is.
Then that's okay.
That works, that works, it's, it, it sort of says it, maybe doesn't say it clearly, but it says.
Well, it's, it's, it's just what, what, you know, what trumps what, I guess.
Well, the Windhoes Stratton Fire District.
I would say that if the sewer.
It's a sewer.
Plant.
Right.
Yes.
Has the capacity to do this, and they have a, so it's not like it's an underground home septic system.
Right, no, I understand, I agree.
So I would say that, that.
Right, there's not a question of failure, which was what we were protecting.
Right, I, I would say that that trumps it.
And then the main thing with that is, like, I had a guy up in High Meadow just recently, and he was doing, it was actually an internal transfer, but I had to, I don't just do those without checking title, and I went back and found his original permits, and, oh, actually, actually, no, this was, uh, Windhoes Stratton Fire District, so I called Rosa, and she said, it's whatever it was, it's a five-bedroom, and he said, no, it isn't, it's seven, and Rosa said, great, I can do that, and she sent him a bill for seven years.
Right, for the.
Of back, back payment, and then moved it forward, and now it's a seven-bedroom.
Yep.
So, and whatever, as far as the Windhoes Stratton Fire District, all you need, and we can clarify it in the ordinance, write it as a note, I mean, you and I probably talk about this, so that I can amend the ordinance and present it.
Yep.
Uh, but I, and, and my belief is, if the Windhoes Stratton Fire District says, they have an email, I'm gonna, it's an email from Rosa.
Right.
It's an email from Rosa that says, this is, you know, X number of bedrooms sleeps X number of people.
Can you tell me what Rosa's position is?
Yeah, she's the administrator of the Windhoes Stratton Fire District, which, which is its own tax entity that runs the, uh, septic system for High Meadow and.
In general, when people submit Julius' bill, and it has a number of units, and the units are a number of bedrooms, and each bedroom in theory has a hundred and forty gallons per bedroom, so, that's how it tends to be. Then the other thing is that we are, there are a lot of people who, on their application, if they have somebody who's their property manager, they're basically listing the property manager, manager, the name, how to get ahold of them, like, the emergency contact, later on, they ask for a contract with that information, and I think it sort of doesn't make sense, because if you don't have one, you're just getting known, they're submitting a blank piece of paper, and if you have one, all that information's on the front application, so I don't know why we're asking, which is something I would just, you'll see listed in the amendment, like, what's.
Okay, well, one, one, I would say, bring us a list of, of things.
Yeah, I guess the point was just to have the accurate, I don't know why Marcel wanted the contract itself, we didn't take it out, that was in there. But what we really want is to, is the, the contact information, and if that person changes, because it's not always the same person, look.
Right.
You just, well, you know, Lancaster might have been, just to throw a name out there, might have been the property manager for X number of properties in our town, well, he's done.
Right.
In October, so, you know, he's gonna, somebody's may have one name, you guess they didn't have to say a name, but anyway, somebody will have one name, and then it'll change over to somebody else, because he either choose to, or whatever, people disagree.
Okay.
Speaking, just one quick question.
Yeah, go for it.
Once you get all of these things submitted, do they have to resubmit? That's what the deadline is, so if they, November fifteenth, and then a year from November fifteenth, they have to do it all over again?
Each year's a renewal.
Each year's a renewal, but you don't have to renew, like, no more, you don't have to do the septic permit again if.
Well, unless they, unless, like I said, they change, like, somebody increases.
If they, if they change something, but the application, they submit again, so if they change their occupancy, then they'll have to change.
Okay, just curious.
You know what I mean, but it's a much shorter list.
It shouldn't just be a renewal at that point.
Right. For most of them, it'll probably, it'll just be a push-button, pay your, pay your.
So it won't be nearly this complicated every single time.
No, no, this is just, we're in this.
We know it, we know.
Yeah, this is a hellacious time.
Okay, well, thank you for doing it.
Sorry. Thank you for finding all the kinks in this.
Yeah, we found them all.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you very much.
So you'll, you'll get back to us as.
I will, I'll see you in two weeks, so you'll hear from me before.
Okay.
Just give a little short list, and then you guys can reflect and tweak from there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, well.
Keep up the good work.
I'll put it into a new draft ordinance, so we'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Great, have a good night, we'll see you at the fair.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll be away.
Oh, poor Margaret.
Sister, we're going tomorrow, so Margaret will be there.
Oh, we will be.
With grandparents, okay, okay.
Tammy, how much stuff do you have tonight?
I don't, I mean, we've kind of been invited here by the select for, so I'm not sure that I have.
Okay, I didn't realize.
Do you have members of the public?
No, the only thing that came up, but to make it this day, because you were away, the only thing that came up, and I thought we resolved it, I, was Lucia's in charge of permits, you're in charge of Lucia, we have nothing to do with it.
She's not in charge of Lucia.
No, she's a, you're, if Lucia can't do her job, you're, you're the one.
If Lucia's unable to do her job, I can fill in for Lucia, but I am technically not in charge of Lucia.
Right.
Lucia, according to the state, is basically a standalone entity.
Right, right, we appointed her, that's right.
You guys have appointed her, and she is in charge of the zoning.
Yeah, and we have no say in that, I agreed with your statement in that email, so.
Well, I forwarded the email because it came to us, and I had to do something with it, so, I wasn't gonna delete it, obviously, so I had to, so I forwarded it on to all of us, and you guys, because.
Why did you forward it to the select for?
I did.
No, why did you? Because.
Because they're the ultimate, I, I guess.
It came to you as town clerk, it should've actually just gone to Lucia.
Right.
So I'm curious as to why you forwarded it to the entire select for.
I, I, I always forward any complaints that I get from the town hall, town clerk, to, to the board.
I mean, zoning complaints have a very formal process.
Right.
And that should've just gone directly to Lucia.
Well, part of it was that, uh, there was a health issue involved with that, and that's why.
There was a health issue?
Yeah, there were piles of, isn't this the one where there was piles of stuff outside?
Oh, the one, the one, I don't know.
No, no, this was the mountain.
Oh, this is Mountain View, with the.
The mountain view.
Yeah, which I agreed with you, there, it was too late for the permit appeal, the fifteen days must have passed already.
Ah, never till I'm in bed.
Yeah, and also, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understood that both you and Lucia went out and checked those measurements.
We did.
Both, right?
Well, we're, technically, I'm not, I'm not a surveyor, I'm not an engineer, but I'm not authorized to check measurements of property, I have to kind of go on the honor system, if they show me the pins, and we can run a straight line through that.
Right.
Um, and, and the main issue was that the contractor, the gentleman, or the contractor that they were using, had pushed material and put it on to the other person's property. They rectified it, they pushed it back, they reseated it, and put it back to the way it was.
But they didn't build the structure to.
The structure met.
Was all fine, that's what I understood.
And that hadn't been built at that time.
That's what I.
The responsibility for the measurement is from, it is from the contractor, it is not Lucia's job.
It's from their engineer.
That's right, no, I'm.
Their engineer, no.
So, and the application, if an application is complete, it will have a full, it will have a full survey showing the structures, the new structures, and the setbacks, and show that it's in compliance. Lucia's job has always been, it used to be, it used to, Marcel used to say, before you pour cement.
Ah, no, I.
The forms were in the ground, before you pour cement, well, measure to make sure that you're complying with your permit, because the permit is on paper, the building is on the ground.
But the responsibility for that is the engineer and the contractor, if something is done incorrectly, it's not Lucia's.
No, so Lucia's the point in hand, Julie, you're missing the point, how would a contractor or an engineer who does the work, and said, this is all good, know that it's out of compliance? Lucia is the one that determines if it's in, out of compliance or not.
Well.
She gets plans that show it's in compliance, so she says, yes, this is good, it's in compliance, and she issues a permit.
Yes, based on the paperwork.
Right, so then the actual on-ground, the compliance with the permit, Julie, comes from the zoning administrator verifying that what she permitted is actually being built.
Because they lie on the permits all the time, all the time.
And then there at all, you're right, the ultimate responsibility is up, but the responsibility to find it is on our zoning administrator, isn't, she's not responsible for building it or doing it.
That is not how, my understanding.
Well, now you have a better understanding.
All right, we, we've got a question.
Yes, or no.
Yeah, is that not what the appeal process is for?
Exactly.
So Lucia is not supposed to go to every single permit that she's approving, once the construction starts, and take a tape measure and measure every single thing, she sees the paper trail, she says, yes, this works, she approves it, and then if the neighbor says, wait a second, this looks way closer than the twenty-five cent back that it's supposed to be, they make an appeal, and then.
You're incorrect, the appeal period happens before any, you're not even supposed to, not supposed, yes, we just had one where they started construction before the appeal period ended, that's on them, you're at risk to do that, you're not supposed to do that, you're supposed to, appeal, the appeal period is, is for an adjoining landowner before construction starts, and they have fifteen days to appeal, this doesn't look right, I looked at the permit, this doesn't, this setback isn't right, something like that, like, this one was very obvious that we went to and had an easy beginning.
But I guess my question is more like, is, I believe that in the zoning laws, like, it's not expected that Lucia's gonna go to every single place.
No, it is not.
And take a tape measure and measure it, so, like, I guess after the appeal process, is there another opportunity in place, once the construction starts, where then Lucia, because I don't believe it falls on Lucia to go take a tape measure to every single thing.
Okay, that is my understanding, and that has been my understanding from Jable.
But it's.
Like, last forty years of working with Marcel.
Can I answer, I'm the zoning administrator, please?
Yeah, please.
If I have a project where the setbacks are tight or close, then I will often take a tape measure there. If the project shows me they have a hundred feet.
Sure.
Hundred feet.
If you're in the middle of a three-acre piece.
So that's fully agreed, fully agreed.
And so when I review the paperwork, and there is a tight setback, then I will usually talk not to the builder, to the owner.
Right.
And say, look, this looks tight for me, and we resolve it that way, now, I am not a surveyor, and if I go out and I measure with my tape, and it says thirty feet, it might be twenty-five feet, I should not attest to my accuracy, because I'm not a surveyor.
And, and you, and you can't necessarily find the pins to.
Often not.
To tell where the other property line is, which is, which is not your responsibility, but like, like you said, if you're in a tight one, where they're close to the property line, if you're in the middle of a five-acre piece, you don't have to worry about it.
I don't worry about it, provided I have all the building plans.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
And I always ask for a plot plan.
Yeah.
With those, the location of the existing structure, the new structure, and with the permit, it's not an official survey, I look at, we have setback lines.
Yeah.
And if everything is within those setback lines, I'm not too worried about it.
The, the application requires that they provide that as part of the application.
And I get all of that, now.
Makes sense, it's a big process.
But I've been doing it a long enough time, uh, to know when I'm in trouble and when I'm not, and not always, I had no clue about the Vanessa one, that blinds me.
When they started construction before the end of their fifteen days.
And also, like you said, they sometimes adjust the figures a little bit, because, And, and also, like you said, they sometimes adjust the figures a little bit, because, and, and they think that it won't be a problem, but if it infringes upon someone else's property because of the setbacks, then it does create a problem.
Right.
I mean, because they say, oh, yeah, it's 25 feet, well, it might only be 15 feet.
So, we've had, and we've had situations in town, like, in two or three, where somebody built something outside of the regulations of their zoning, and we had to take them to court, and they had to pull the porch off of their building.
I have many people do that, that's what.
So, I mean, it behooves everyone to know if things are right or wrong, but, because I'm just trying to, I'm just confused a little bit, so you're saying, so say it's, you know, it's a one acre lot in High Meadow, and, you know, where everything's very tight, it's a one acre lot.
I don't have to worry about silver and well because it's municipal.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that helps.
Yeah, but, yeah, you're not worried about it, no, it's about the setbacks.
And I have, you know, and I have specific criteria on the buy. What all of you do not understand is every zoning permit that I issue is three parts. First part, completed application, where I talk to owners, builders, we discuss what the project is. Number two, I go out after the appeal period in the post office with a laminated zoning permit, and I go to the site, and I speak with the builders, they post it, we talk again, I visit the site. At that point, I may say, oh, well, this is tight, and I'll measure. My third one is I go back out to the site.
End of construction.
And that is when I issue a notification of compliance. I go out with the plans, oh, yeah, they built the porch where they said they were going to, and then I can issue them a final notification of compliance, which closes out the project. If it is a big project, like a family, single family residence, I'm out there four, five, or six times onsite with builders, sometimes owners, to make sure everything was going the right way.
Okay, that's what I say, that's what our job is.
All right, so do you all understand? Yeah, yeah, the measuring part.
How do you know who's complying about?
I, I, you know, I have to have faith, and when the builder puts the tape here and says it's 25 feet, I go out and measure to the stage and, oh, yeah, 25 feet. I have to believe the builder put it in the right place. Now, maybe he didn't.
Well, if they didn't, then it'll be their consequences, because if it comes up and it says, well, it's only 18 feet because they pushed it, that's, that's not your fault. That's, but anyways, so I, I think that's a better clarify.
Sorry, I just would like to respond to Bill and Hannah's question. So, if, if the appeal period has expired, an interested party may file a complaint. Lucia would investigate that complaint, and she may issue an informal or a formal notice of violation.
Yes.
And that's totally at her discretion, but that addresses the.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, that's what actually came up at that house, Matt and you.
And I have issued notice of violations, not often, but I have whenever there's a problem, and that's a whole separate process.
Right.
That people have to know too.
Okay, so on the actual one that, that came up, this Matt's view house, did you, once it finally reached you, did you reach out to them and tell them, like, sorry, it's all okay?
I had an hour-long meeting with Mark Dens, who was.
Dens is the one, that's the one that said to him.
And he is out of compliance right now himself with the.
That's just ironic, but, okay.
Yeah.
But you explained that the house he was complaining about is in compliance and he's all good.
He walked away from the rangeway and the litter.
What's he doing about his?
About all of it.
What's he doing about his?
He's taking them down.
Oh, he's taking them down. It was some sheds, right?
Yeah, he put some sheds up during COVID. So, I met with Mark.
Okay, good, that was my question.
And I know the owner of the property next door, and we did some measuring, you there also, and you out there.
Yeah, that's what I understood.
And everything I saw complied to the permit.
So, you're, you're, you have, well, none of those owners are happy right now.
Everyone is.
Relatively.
Happy.
Happy as they can be.
Thank you for your efforts.
Yes.
I, I think part of it was some, some confusion, and I think that you've explained some of that now, so, and, and if they lie on their measurements and they get caught, then that's their problem.
That, 100%.
But thank you for your.
We've ripped places off.
I know we have, yes, exactly.
No, I have.
We'll give you a bigger hammer and a bigger crowbar.
You know, and I've had people.
We went to court and had the court tell us that.
I have people put up, yes, that don't comply with the setbacks, and I have made them move it.
Okay.
So, you, I mean, all those things that none of you are aware of.
Right, well, for years, people said that.
Stop those into it.
For years, people said, oh, the sheds are on skids, so it's not a permanent structure and it's movable, but they still can't be in the setbacks.
Correct.
I mean, Beth used to drive around and say, call you up and say, there's a shed, that's where.
I, I remember somebody, I remember somebody putting a, a satellite dish in somebody else's setback.
Oh, yeah.
And take it down and move it.
Especially when there was a big ass one.
Yes.
We had a whole building built on a neighbor's property.
A whole building?
Yes.
Oh, yes. A whole building which had to be torn down.
Yeah.
And we're still going on with that.
Well, thank you for your efforts.
Yes, thank you, good, glad we could hear that.
Appreciate it.
And glad those guys are both relatively happy.
So, before I close this out.
What?
I have something I'm offering, my resignation letter.
Oh, oh, minutes secretary.
I have, this is all for you to read.
Oh, okay. Well, it sounds like you ought to whip this out a lot.
And, yeah.
Well, we got it.
Owl will be taking the minutes, because in my letter to you all, it is clear what the planning commission is undertaking, which is probably a two year, you say, two year project.
And you're doing the Village Center stuff too, too, too.
And that's.
Yeah, we're using a plan to grant, and it's.
So, we are applying for a grant in order to rewrite our zoning regulations, our subdivision regulations, and comply with the new flood regulations that are coming out in 2027. So, we've got three documents, we're going to try.
And, yeah, we're applying for a grant, and with the help of Linda.
Right, you're not, you're not, you're not resigning from zoning administrator.
No.
Resigning is taking minutes, and, and I, I want to say that, that we accept your resignation with regret.
And appreciate your years of service.
And thank you for all the time that you have spent doing them.
Absolutely.
And, and it gets confusing with three or four different people talking at once, and, but when we ask for a correction, you take care of it. But we, we do accept your resignation with regret, and we understand that you have a bigger job over there because of all, I mean, look, how many, how many zone, curb cuts did we get tonight, seven?
I think so, yeah.
Six or seven, so, you've got a very busy thing, but, but thank you, and.
Very, very welcome, and my thinking was maybe the guy in the middle there.
Yeah, the owl, that's why we got it, so that we could do it.
Do this have to get?
So that you can, um.
You have to edit them a little bit after it's.
Well, you'll see your.
We have to get it.
And my.
Are you still doing tonight?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Our computer's broken.
No, I fixed it.
Okay.
No, they will be out to you tomorrow, per usual.
Okay, thank you.
But I have to focus my attention where it's.
Lucia, as we get older, we have to stay focused on one less projects.
Uh, that's a reason I know. I'm trying to think, do I have one?
But thank you, Lucia.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lucia.
Yeah, very well.
Thank you.
Okay.
But Stuart was saying, I think they say the first thing to go to your mind, but I can't remember.
But I can't remember that. Hannah, do you have anything special that you care, you just came? You folks, I'm sorry, I don't, are you here for something special or just came?
I was just here, I was here, we did our short-term rental applications last week.
Okay.
And I have particular interest in the sewer conversation, but I don't have anything to add right now.
Okay, I just didn't want to, if it was something quick, because we got a lot of stuff, we've jumped around. So, Trevor.
Hi.
All right.
Oh, that new bathroom, hi, Kyle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Christie. So, you'll be in touch.
Thanks, Christie, yeah, work in progress.
Okay, now, what have, what have you got? We got two big projects starting soon.
Yes, so, the French Hollow project, I have not checked my emails.
We just got something today.
Guys, my phone has been on life support, but I'm not sure that, I have had a conversation with Scott Jensen, who's taken over for Josh Carver Hollow while he's on vacation, and he is double checking to make sure all the permits are in place, and he is not sure.
He has not issued it yet.
We got, oh, you, Les has sent a long email. Yes, where did that come?
So, their tentative time was to start on Monday, but they are not sure at this time until Scott makes sure the permits are all in place, so.
We have the court, we have the army corps, right, which is usually the.
That's usually the hardest.
That's usually the hardest one, so, so we're.
It's.
It's updates from town administrator, is that it?
Yes, I got it, there it is.
They're, for some reason, they're struggling with the stream alteration permits, and it's getting to the point where it's cookie cutter at this point, it does not seem to be.
You were busy, so I don't know.
So, they're struggling to get through it. They plan on starting sooner than later, I will tell.
That's in French Hollow.
That's on French Hollow.
Did they change the sign?
I have not been out there, Stuart, I.
I go by there every day, so I find, right?
So, they were supposed to have updated the sign from the 19th to, it didn't get changed?
According to the UPS driver and the FedEx driver, they both asked me while they were at my house today, it had not been changed.
Okay, because I, I spoke to the powers to be at Hunter's, and I said, I want the sign changed today.
People have asked me multiple times what's going on.
I will be on that tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Okay.
It says August 14 on it.
Yeah, I'm.
There was a lot of confusion.
19, I spoke to. 19 through 29, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so just to, let me carry on here, because I'll forget what I'm going to say, but, so just to clear a lot of this up, I had a direct conversation with the company, and I advised them not to post this road until they had the permits in place, because I knew this was going to be an issue. It's been a struggle with them, I mean, the last couple of projects have been, I think Les and I had a conversation today about the bond still on it.
We still do not have a bond.
Still don't have a bond on that, which Stuart, you and I have had conversations on, and I think that, and how it got skipped on the RFP, I'm not sure, but it is a standard process.
We, we, we made a decision to buy a bond.
Yep.
That, that, that will, that will be part of my conversation.
Well, we made a decision to pay Hunter for the $700 so he can get a bond.
Do you have a contract yet?
Nope.
Still no contract with Hunter, so this goes back to my.
I will.
But he told you both will be sent by the end of this week, is what you announced.
That's what he's, he is promising.
He anticipates starting work on Monday, assuming the state permitting is placed by there.
Right, but the state permitting specialist said it's.
In the air.
In the air, depends on what happens with the permitting process. If he needs more information, he's not going to issue the permit.
So, just so, just so the board is aware.
Well, there will be further updates to come.
There will be.
Just tomorrow morning.
I want the board to be aware that I've done my due diligence to try to avoid this at this time, and it just seems to fall on deaf ears. So, hopefully, they're going to get going on it, it's not going to take long, once they get going. As you've noticed, and you haven't been downtown yet, there's two brand-new shiny digital boards set up that they plan on starting the access road on September 2nd, so.
I wonder if they should change it slightly, so that as you go up the access road, you see it, instead of as you're coming down Route 30.
Correct, that would be my suggestion, but I still have asked the same question to the company, to make sure everything, and I have got an iron clad, everything is.
We have no contract, no bond.
So, so we're kind of going down the same ship here, we don't know everything is in place, so here they are posting the job, and we've got a lot of open-ended questions, because what's going to happen is it's going to be French Hollow 2.0, but magnified many times, because we've got, I mean, I've already started getting.
The access road is going to be a shit show.
Absolutely, and we know that, and there's, there's nothing we can do to change that.
We have to get.
We've got to try to minimize the damage, make it, before we even get started, because if they don't have.
I will, I will try to give updates tomorrow after I will be in with them first thing tomorrow.
Contracts and bonds on both jobs, that's what's missing.
And it just makes sure all the.
You got to see.
Yes, I did.
The signage and make sure all the permits are in place, I mean, because the permits are a big hangup, I mean, because.
Well, the access road, we have permission, but we just haven't got the contract nor the bond.
I haven't.
Where you guys. The stream alteration and what land permits are still working through.
I haven't actually seen the official notification from Scott Jensen about the access road, stream alteration and what ones.
Right, and he did not.
I think they're working on it, but I don't, I haven't seen.
So, but we don't, we don't need it for all of those phases on the access road, do we?
Just, just the one core that we're doing.
The big.
Biggest.
But it's still all one umbrella.
All right, but because, all right, because the corner and the two small cores.
Correct.
Don't appear to need that, so if we get those done.
Well, even so, you've got to be careful, because if you start breaking ground amongst the project, you could get yourself in an issue, so it's.
So, will you forward me Jensen's phone number?
Yep, my phone's out on life.
I understand, but, because I normally deal with Josh directly.
Well, Josh is obviously, so, Josh is on vacation.
I, I know that.
Well, listen, do you have Jensen's phone number?
I'm talking to Scott in the morning.
Okay.
We, we already have an agreement that he's going to look through everything for French Hollow and give me an update.
Okay, well, you can.
Maybe you want to meet, meet with, listen.
You could, you could ask him.
Oh, we do that?
Yeah, you're, you're doing it remote.
Oh, remote.
If, if worse comes to worse, ask him if we're ready to go on the access road, so that we could at least start the first phase, the corner and the two small cores, and I, I understand the big one is, that's a whole different ballgame, but if we could at least get started on that and get that phase out of the way, that would be huge.
Yeah, as long as we got.
We need a contract and a bond.
Okay, I will, I will be on that first thing in the morning, trust me.
So, but other than that, I mean, unless there's any other discussion on those two projects, the roadside mower seems to be holding up, and I have actually gotten, once again, compliments on Dusty's mowing, and I've asked Dusty, I don't know what magic lawn you're using, but.
Whoever does French Hollow and running hills is awesome.
I just, I don't know what it's.
Hey, God.
It's his niche.
Just, he's given, he's taken his time with it.
It's his niche.
And, and I know that somebody was worried we were going to run out of time, I think he's, you're going to have plenty of time to do what we.
Well, it's, well, you see, you're looking at the other six, because we've got to start going the other way at some point, usually by the end of September, we're going into prepping for our.
You're going to.
And that could be, Stuart, that could be, but it takes two months.
You were, you were, you were thinking worst case scenario.
Absolutely, and that's, that's what my job is, to try to find a way to, to skate around that. Les and I will be getting together surprise to put the salt out of it, because that time is upon us. And the sand should be starting, getting delivered any time, and as far as the paving, I've been about once a week trying to figure out when, and I'm not getting really far with him, because he had big issues on another project, so I'm pushing as hard as I can for, as we're kind of getting our tails licked a little bit by our cross stitches on Old Town Road, which I don't know if anybody's been up through there, they get kind of come and go, but we can't babysit them every five seconds. So, hopefully, if he can get in there.
You have to dust them up every couple of days, do what you got to do, and we, we had the same problem on, on.
Pretty much any blacktop.
Anything we've done.
Yes, yes, and we just try to take care of it best we can, and, and it's hard because the roads have a shape, try to hold them and stuff.
What's the South Road retaining wall with A.S. Clark that's in this thing? She has a copy that perform. You have the performance bond, or you don't have the contract or the performance?
We're working on a contract, we have the bond, he is in the process of getting the permits.
Okay.
It was just a bit of a, a later start date than he had anticipated.
Because, I mean, it's been a rough winter in the construction.
Okay, all right, you got, you got anything else?
No, not really, I mean, we're just plugging along.
All right.
I'm going back down to the fair and see if any more showed up.
Thanks for coming in.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, do, do we want to talk about ordinance for regulated dogs and wolf hybrids without Derek here?
You just have to sign it.
Well, we have to do the sign, just sign it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, then, do, has everyone looked it over?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
Has anybody got any problem with it?
No.
Has, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance regulating dogs and wolf hybrids.
A second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the ordinance, because it is an ordinance.
Yeah, dog and wolf hybrid ordinance.
I, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None, okay. All right, and let's sign.
So, this ordinance also has, it's a 60-day.
Yeah, but I can't really go any further until you guys.
Right, that's what we're doing.
So, Village Center designation.
Did you see my note on what I still need?
Yes.
AC.
ACD reviewed our application, requires more information before the application is deemed complete, we need to provide a narrative of why we are seeking Village Center designation, but Matt was doing this.
I thought, I thought we had this thing all squared away.
He tracked it some stuff, but they need to know from the select board why we are He drafted some stuff, but he, they need to know from the select board why we are applying and what has been done for revitalization efforts.
A list of previous and current revitalization effort activities.
And I don't know what those might be.
Well, we've definitely revitalized the fairgrounds immensely, and that is in the center of town.
We also got every, Stuart did, but he got every property in town is off of the community water system.
But he's got their own water system.
Everyone has their own wells.
Are these all town initiatives though?
No.
These like private initiatives, like, you know what I'm saying, like?
Whatever.
I mean, it was done by individuals, but it's a revitalization activities. Well, well, yeah, I mean, we.
I mean, it's making the center of town better, the village area.
Right, and aside from the road improvements. Oh, yeah.
And, and we need it so that different entities in the village can apply for grants.
We put the sidewalks in.
Many things were not eligible for.
Put the sidewalks in, the state put the sidewalks in.
Oh.
But still, it's all part of.
Revitalization.
It's revi, I mean, I, I, I don't think that it has to be that the town initiated or did it. It's stuff that has been done and brought it better.
It says a list of previous and current revitalization activities. Doesn't say, I mean, maybe, maybe it just doesn't say because she didn't write it, but it says that the town.
Taken from her, her message.
Okay, so it doesn't say that the town has to have done it these terms.
Well, the town doesn't own any property directly in town to do anything.
Work with our community and encourage community to the private wells.
Dennis put those sidewalks in. He wanted trees too. He had a whole tree section.
Yeah, but the road would have been a lane and a half water. And it would have been parking on 30 in the middle of town.
Also the flowers.
I was gonna say.
And the flowers.
Supervision Committee in general.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
And we are paving from the access road up, so that's part of that section.
That's part of revitalization.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, so do you need more information from us?
I'm gonna take what you guys just said and.
And go.
Go with it.
Okay.
Well, you asked some other things here. It says, ACCD also asks for a little more detail on the wastewater system for the village. If it has one, if it plans to have one, and who will be served in the history. So currently, each property is on its own individual subject system. But we have gone to the Windhoek Stratton Fire District and they have an allocation of.
50,000 gallons a day.
50,000 gallons a day. If we bring a line down the access road into town, if that was to happen. So that, you know, that would, that would put it on a municipal, the Windhoek Stratton Fire District is a municipal water wastewater system. We wouldn't need the water part. We would just need to have pump stations and, and the wastewater. And, and what, you know, that would allow the town to expand dramatically, whether, you know, whether we want that or not is probably in the.
Well, the, the thing is, there might be more opportunity because right now, there's, there are several, there are several buildings that are just real estate offices because you can't do anything else because you don't have sewage capacity.
Right.
I mean, at one time, they were gonna put a, a, a beauty shop in my grandmother's house. Don't have sewage capacity, so can't do it. So, I mean, how many more real estate offices do we need in town?
We just got new one.
Yeah, I mean.
The workforce turned into real estate office.
Oh, did it?
Yes.
Okay, well, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Haven Group.
So anyways, so I, I think that there's more, if we have that capability, there are more, it would be nice to have some other things.
It opens up opportunities for, for a lot of people.
Right.
So that would, that would benefit the center of town, which is one of your questions, right?
Yeah, the village.
The second floor of some of those buildings could convert into alderman.
It could.
And we also, we also rehab the old town hall. That's a huge improvement for the center of town.
Oh, that's something the town did.
Yes, that's true.
Kami said the second floors of some of those buildings could become housing.
Possibly.
Yes.
Probably, because the sewage capacity would be there, and that's right.
And the fact that we made the old town hall a community center, I think that is important.
It's hard to believe how much stuff is going on there. Alex?
Uh, some question. How far does the village center spread out?
Not this far.
Goes to the, to the workforce or to the water bank, basically.
To the, to the bank, that's where it stops. I tried to get it up to here so we could.
Yeah, that, that would have.
I guess I was also just, I was thinking about, you know, plans to redo this and also plans to redo the library and redo the, like that, so.
It's outside of the center.
We gotta get to the center.
Didn't even, didn't even get started.
So we, in order, and it doesn't mean we can't amend things going forward, but let's just start by getting.
Right, we get that.
Right, this is a result of us.
Expand it afterwards.
So this is a result of us saying at our last meeting or two meetings ago that we want to apply for, what did they call it?
Legacy.
Legacy village center, instead of waiting for.
We do.
Yeah, because we didn't wanna wait for Wyndham Regional to take the whole thing over and then decide what's going on. So that's where we are, and they came back and said, we need some information from you.
We need some more, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. Public Safety Facility Committee. Goldstone has most of the list of the people on the committee. I, there was one of them I didn't think of when I spoke to him. And we will have to send out a, a meeting, a gen, and have a meeting and then set up, how to run that at the time.
Yeah, that email, everybody.
Yeah, I, I did, yeah, yeah. And I, I spoke to him and he said, well, you're the contact. I said, no, I'm not the contact person. I'm just trying to get it so that we get started. And then you set up who it is and get it going.
We have a meeting and you'll set up who's the.
Right. I'm, I'm thinking we're gonna try to have the meeting here so that he can put his plans and stuff up here on the TV instead of sitting around a laptop.
Yeah, and you know, so it's Peter Strife, Xander, you, Scott.
Yourself.
Steve Davidson. And Junior?
Derek.
No.
Derek.
There are six people.
That's six, that's six, yeah.
Right. And that doesn't mean there can't be more or, or.
Well, and all the meetings have to be warned because it's a town committee.
Yep.
Right.
So we've at least got something to start with. He's good. He said, now we can start re-energizing it, he said. So town, townwide reappraisal. Seems like we're coming along.
We have moved, yeah, we've moved into the hollow and they're moving along quite rapidly.
Really?
Yeah, because more people from other towns from Nemrick have freed up, so now they're all concentrating here.
And Alex and I have an appointment.
London is not due until 28.
With him, with the appraiser that we talked to, I can't remember.
Nate.
To get.
Jacob.
Or Jacob, I'm sorry. Sorry.
This information to do what?
To, to take him to some of the remote sites, hunting camps.
Oh, oh, yeah, back off.
That, that he can get to.
Yeah, good idea.
Um, so we have set up a time for next Thursday, not, not tomorrow, if the weather's good, to go to those places. Doug's, I believe, sent them literature so that we can get permission to go.
I believe he was, yeah, yeah. I mean, I've cleared it with one already.
How many are there?
Three that are out in the woods.
And they like, were hunting camps and they're now not so much hunting camps anymore.
They're homes.
Well.
Kind of.
We'll see.
We'll see.
We'll see.
But we, we're gonna get in there. He said, it won't take me long at each one. But we're gonna go enforce and, and get, so to get in there, I have a piece of equipment we can get there with.
Yeah, you can't just drive up on it and you're sure of it.
So anyway, so we're going with that. So that's coming out along. What about Housing Committee? Any new?
Nothing, just haven't, we haven't warned our next meeting.
Okay.
People have been on vacation.
All right, yep, a lot of that going on right now.
I will not be here the next meeting. I will be in North Carolina.
Oh, okay. Y'all?
Well.
Y'all? Y'all?
Yes, y'all.
Don't forget, everybody, the town clerk's office is closed Monday and Tuesday.
15th and 16th.
Whoa, no, not 15th and 16th.
No, no, the 20, the 25th and 26th, that's in September.
I'm saying, oh, September, that's what I have.
That's September, that's when we go to training.
Right, town clerk closed.
Monday, Tuesday. Al and I need serious fair recovery.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you're closed, oh, town clerk closed?
Yes.
Monday, Tuesday.
Yes. I mean, I'm available if there's an emergency, but.
Where is it?
It won't, it won't be here.
Oh, the 25th, 26th?
Yes.
Oh, I don't have that.
I can't believe that. It's been on the door for weeks.
So, all right, then, new business. We got anything new that we have, what's this here? Solid Waste Implementation Plan?
Oh, that was up at the top, but it was just a revised version for, if anybody wants to skim through it, I resubmitted to the state. You don't have to do anything with it until they approve it and say it looks fine, and then we continue.
So you, you need us to read it and get back to you?
You already did.
We did, okay, so, all right. Um, no liquor licenses?
No, sir.
That Supervisor Employee Evaluations, we've started.
But those aren't the evaluations. We haven't decided on the form. Yes, Bill.
I did not.
That we're gonna use.